Hey everybody, Meredith Oliver here. It is 4:00 Eastern Time on Tuesday in the middle of a pandemic, which must mean that it's time for our weekly virtual town hall meeting. As I said, my name is Meredith Oliver. I'm with Meredith Communications. We do digital marketing and sales consulting for builders. And a little over nine days ago, I was sitting, working on my laptop, social distancing, and I was overwhelmed. I was freaking out. I was trying to figure out what I had learned from '08 that I could possibly apply to this very brand new situation. And what I realized that I did know and had learned was the value of community and the value of many voices and the value of sharing best practices and really coming together as an industry. And so in that moment, I dashed off some quick emails and text messages to these lovely people without a lot of explanation and just said, will you join me? And let's make an effort to try to figure something out as we go. A lot of what we're all doing is on instinct. And then again, we're also constantly looking at every piece of data that comes in and trying to figure out, okay, for the short term, what is the new reality? And how are we going to keep selling new homes while we do it? What's really cool is if you are participating in the Facebook group, and we'll give you the link to that in a few minutes. I asked for a roll call yesterday for just, how's it going out there? Are you guys selling anything or making appointments? Or what's happening? And bam, I was like, I couldn't stop saying bam because I was so excited. I thought, what chef is that that says that constantly?
Emerald.
Emerald, it was Emerald, right? Bam. So I was just like, wow, look at you guys. So I was so encouraged that in fact, in the past seven days, many of you have sold a home. Woo-hoo. You have made appointments. You have done virtual visits. When we talked seven days ago today, Matt, Angela, Carrie, do you remember like they didn't, we didn't even know what a virtual visit was? And now you're doing them. You're doing them. So I'm incredibly proud and honored to be part of this industry and to be part of the conversation today. So also joining me, we've got Angela McKay of Lasso, also properly known as ECI Software Solutions, whose real hair color three weeks from now will be...
Oh, I'm going with dark brown.
That's what it... I know, that's one of my favorite memes.
Pretty sure, pretty sure the majority, 70% is still dark brown.
Yes, we're going with that. We're going with that. All right, we also have Carrie Mulcrone, normally hailing from the Twin Cities, but actually hailing from her Florida home this week. She's a sales trainer, leader, coach, extraordinary, extraordinary. And we're happy to have you, Carrie.
And the hair color?
Yeah.
Is kind of getting gray.
In three weeks, we'll all know each other's real colors, won't we? All right. And then new on our docket this week, so amazing that he would join us, Kevin Oakley of Do You Convert? Known for his ability to strategize and analyze and marketize and make all things awesome.
And my preferred hair color is hair. So I want, I want to keep, I don't care what color it is. Doesn't matter to me. I'll take any shade.
I know. And then of course, we are so happy to have one of the first ones to jump in, Matt Riley, Vice President of Group Two Advertising. Group Two does marketing and advertising solutions for home builders all over the country. And Matt, in three weeks, your hair color will be...
My hair color, like Kevin, I just prefer to have hair. I will settle for the same amount of hair that I have today in three weeks. That's a win for me, especially with everyone. I'm used to working from home, but especially with everyone at home at the same time.
Yeah.
Keeping hair is my, is my goal.
Yeah, that's a fantastic thing. A little bit of housekeeping. We're going to shoot for five o'clock today, but I have put on the Zoom time until 5:30 for extended Q and A because there are so many challenges out there. So you're welcome to hang with us as long as you possibly can today. We've, we're currently at 193 and people are still coming in. We had 428 registered last time I checked, so that's pretty cool. You'll see in your go to meeting toolbar that you have a Q and A icon. Angela and others will be absolutely monitoring the Q and A. So that's where you can go and go ahead and ask a question. Others of you that are attending this are able to answer questions. So feel free to help each other while we're doing this. You can do that in the chat box or you can do that in the Q and A box. All right, I'm going to launch our first poll today. And I want to get an idea of what is working right now for you. All right, so if you had to kind of take a guess at it and figure out what is still generating those sales and leads that you are seeing coming in, hopefully fingers crossed you are, launch poll. Okay, what's working? What channel or tactic do you think? And again, this might be on instinct. This might be gut feeling. Would you say, oh, you're, you got it, man, you're on it. All right. Look at that, we've got Zillow, we've got Facebook, Insta ads. Look at me being cool. We've got Google Ads, display banner ads, email, realtors. And I did, all of my polls always have a joke answer, which one of you can feel free to...
That way Kevin Weitzel has something to vote for.
Right, exactly, exactly. Now, those of you that are calling in by phone, I do see a number of you by phone, just so that you kind of know what's happening right now. We have an online poll on the screen and we're, we're getting, you know, people voting. All right, so I'm going to give it a few more seconds now. My other panelists, do you guys hear that?
Yeah, somebody is not muted.
Yeah, trying to figure out what that is.
If everyone can just double check their audio and make sure you're on mute, just in case something's slipping through.
Yeah.
That will make sure that, yeah, there we go.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we have such a big group. Okay, so I am going to hit end poll to keep this moving. And...
See the email, just saying.
Yeah, looky there. So this is again, your gut reaction, quick answer. We're not digging into your Google Analytics at the moment, but looks like we've got a pretty good solid winner with Facebook, Instagram ads, email at 46%. I know Carrie's going to touch on that. Realtors at 35 and yes, a couple of you voted for smoke signals. Very nice, very nice. Okay, so today's format, we are going to do big three ideas. So I've challenged each panelist to come up with three quick tactical, practical tips, strategies. Actually, Matt, I'm going to let you kick us off. I know, because your topic is really kind of at the umbrella, big picture level of brand messaging. You know, I mean, is it appropriate to run $10,000 off a home right now? Free motorcycle with purchase, like we saw in '08, please God, no saying...
Buy a house, get a car.
Buy a house, get a car. Like what is our overall tone in messaging? What should that look like? Go.
All right. Thanks everybody for jumping in. On my top three things, one of the things, this has absolutely nothing to do with marketing, but I think it's worth pointing out and, and making a point of it. We as leaders, you as leaders within an organization, one of the themes that, you know, that have recent, that have come up all over the past week, week and a half is as leaders, we want to make sure that we don't get frozen by decisions. A lot of times and a lot of organizations, it can take a long time because everybody wants to have an opinion to get something out the door. And looking back at the last downturn that we had, one of the things that the most successful people that I knew, when they had the most success, the key thing there was being nimble and making, having the ability to make quick decisions as an organization and getting that out there, making a decision to go. And if you need to make another decision to change course, that's okay too. And we're not locked and loaded into that single, into that single decision. But having the ability to be nimble and make those quick decisions, I think are really, really important for us as leaders to keep in mind and not be paralyzed by, I've got to get every single person's opinion on this. So I just wanted to start that off and point that out as leaders of an organization. And even as a, you know, if you're a salesperson in the field or a marketer or whatever you are, making those quick decisions and not just sitting back and waiting or getting caught up in paralysis by analysis is really key. Diving into, we talked about messaging and brand messaging as a company. I see that, you know, we'll talk about some trend lines in a second, but really what, what we're talking about is once people settle back into this new norm, right? And it's a temporary norm, but once we settle back into this new norm, we will eventually have to engage back into some advertising. And I know sometimes that feels like a little bit of a dirty word, but at the same time, we have to be, we still want to make sure we're in front of prospects, our current people, our current buyers, things like that. So on the other end, what we're trying to do is continually move the ball forward. And then at the other end of this, we know we're going to pick up more on the other end. We can continue to push the ball forward, moving forward. We're going to still capture sales along the way. It probably won't be at the same rate as what we're used to. And that's okay because we know this is temporary. But even if you start looking outside of our industry, you'll start to see some shifts. Literally the past two nights in a row, I've been watching, we use YouTube TV. And so I've watched the automobile industry and the food industry change their messaging. If you go back a week ago, everybody was, we're here with you. We're going to all hold hands and sing kumbaya. And that's great, right? We're in this together. And I still believe that 100%, but the messaging and the messaging is shifting a little bit there, but it still has the right tone. It's not inappropriate. It's not in your face. It's not, you, because you can't, from us, we can't say, you know, interest rates are at all time lows because, yeah, they're low, but it's a little bit of a yo-yo right now, right? So we, but we still have to pick our tone and be right there. But when we're looking at these, the automobiles are saying, hey, shop online, we'll do home delivery, right? And oh, by the way, if you lose your job in the next six months to a COVID-19 issue, well, we'll pay your bill. We'll give you six months of forgiveness in there, right? You're seeing four, that was, I think that was Hyundai. I saw something with GMC. I saw another one with Ford. They're laying it on there real, and they're really heavily incentivizing right now because they have to. I don't think we as an industry should be going that direction right now, but I'm just using that as an example. The other thing is we've seen, I'm seeing happening with restaurants. I saw multiple, but the one that comes to mind was I saw a Zaxby's ad. And they're, it's a regular commercial at the end of it. They're talking about how you can do business with them, right? Even though dine-in is not an option, drive-through, curbside pickup, all of those things are still available. And so they're getting out there in front of their customers and letting them know, yeah, we get it, it's different. But here, if you want to do business with us, here's how we can do business with you, right? And I think that messaging is really important and that tonality. We still have to be there and not in any way, shape or form saying, we need to, you know, open up the checkbook and start stroking, you know, $100,000 checks, you know, blowing the budget out of the water. It still needs to be monitored. But I think once each market will go through this little shock level and then normalcy, and it'll happen at different times based on the market because different municipalities and governments and cities are all doing different things at different times. So you're going to, the shift of what we're seeing is kind of, kind of be layered and as we go down the, as we go across at different time points because things are happening differently and not all at the same time.
Yeah, and Matt, let me jump in on what you're saying there. Because the way I think about it was last week was shock, kind of shock and awe. Yeah, you know, and like this is real and this is happening. And then it was also scramble, 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 scramble. What are we going to do? What are we going to do from a personal or professional standpoint? We were all doing that. This week has a bit more of a settling in feeling to it. Not quite so chaotic, not quite so crazy. But to your point, we could start the whole shock and scramble cycle all completely over again, depending on where this thing evolves. And I think that's, you know, so, okay, so for this week, good. And that's why I said, we're going to do this weekly because I don't know what next week looks like for a while.
That's right.
Right? So to your first point, everybody listening, move, move fast. And then the other thing I heard him say was make it easy to do business with you and communicate how to do business with you in this new environment. And I definitely know from the clients I'm monitoring, the ones that have put that verbiage out there, those graphics out there, they're the ones that are still getting leads, appointments and sales right now. All right, so back to you, Matt.
No, thanks. No, I completely agree. And that's why it ties into making quick decisions and being nimble. Because like you just said, Meredith, you can see a level off period and it can be different in each area, but we could see another drop. We could see a bump that could be a fake out and then, you know, and so we just have to be really aware of what's happening. But you know, from a good news perspective, looking at just kind of the overall trend line as a whole, we did see that shock and awe, right? We saw, I saw 30, 35% declines. And then, but the good news is I've seen, and again, everybody could be a little different depending on what, how, what data they're looking at. But I've seen for the past three to four days, a little bit of a level out. And I, that calm and settle. And that's overall web traffic. And I even looked at it organically, splitting out just organic search by itself. Because that can, organic search can really give you a real representation of true buyer intent. Because you know, paid advertising, you're, it's disruption. It's in front of them and you're, you're hoping to trigger them into, to engage. But organic search really gives us a true buyer sentiment and true buyer intent. So we saw organic search take a larger hit than what overall website traffic was. But again, over the last three or four days, we've seen that level out and organic actually a little, a little bit. I mean, nothing like, let's, you know, let the fireworks go off. But that is what we've seen from a trend line. And that's why I think that we have to be prepared to reengage with the right tone and the right messaging to let people know how they can do business with us and being quick and nimble with our decisions.
Nice, all right, very, thank you. I'm totally in line, awesome. All right, so if we kind of think like we're working down an inverted pyramid here, right? So at the very top level is overall strategy, brand message, kind of how we're going to put ourselves forward. So then content marketing, right? So specifically like what are some of the things you could do, say, ideas for you out on your channels? And there's nobody better than that than Kevin. So Kevin, jump in here with your big three.
You bet. I think the first thing, and I always stalk my audience before I get in front of you. So you know, Meredith, I know you posted the, the picture of Redfin's virtual tour option on their page. And Redfin's been a leader for years. I mean, they were the first ones to do self-booking tours. A lot of the things that the Zillow and other groups have followed. So they're a great place to look at and steal from. But what hit me is I was counting up for another presentation I was doing, there was like 12 different ways to take a next step on a Redfin listing page, between calling, virtual tours, creating an account, asking questions, email, text, 12 different ways. And I thought, wow, that's where a lot of focus is right now. And then it hit me that the most important content on that page was none of those things. Without a great picture or multiple pictures, they all, almost all Redfin tours have now a virtual tour or Matterport-like experience that you can do. They've got good descriptions. They've really prioritized content for the past year and a half on top of those other changes. And, and my argument would be that without content, none of it, nothing else matters. You know, no one's going to say, look at that amazing black and white rendering. They offer a virtual tour, we should, we should reach out and talk to them, right? No one's going to do that. So I think what's, what's interesting is that when you think about the five Ps of, of, you know, promotion, product, people, place, that, that's idea. As marketers, we think product is just left to the architect group. And I would argue that in, in our modern world, the packaging of the product, which I would consider the content marketing around it, right? Like we're not changing the floor plan, we're not changing the price of the house. But the packaging that we create, I mean, and think about all the unboxing videos and the bazillion views and that experience we all share when we open up our new Apple device and peel off the stuff, right? The packaging and the product are inseparable now. And so the product plus the content packaging equals the total product. And that, and Do You Convert for a long time, we've talked about this invisible emotional line that we've got to get people to come up to, to be excited enough to want to reach out and connect. And make no mistake about it, virtual selling is a real thing, but the friction to get to that point is still very high. You want me to sit down for who knows how long Zoom call for who knows what end result? I better really love the content. So just without it, nothing else matters. And that means you've got to protect it in your budget. If your boss comes and says, we need to skinny down, you have no choice but to keep all of your photo and video and content creation efforts there. You just, you can't sacrifice those things. Point number two would be stop hiding it, guys. You, it's, a lot of you have content on your sites, I know, because we, we watch you and we encourage you to do that, but it's hidden in this weird little button in this little place. And Meredith will probably go into that more in her, her point. So I won't spend a lot of time about fixing it on your site. But if your Matterport tour is, is a button this big in the corner right now, that's a mistake. And a real quick and simple way to fix that, because website challenges can be slower, even though they can be, they're faster than building a house, but it's, it's slower than other options. Make a blog post, create a landing page, whatever it is that has all of the different ways to get interactive with you. And then you can repurpose that for your online sales team to point to for pop-ups on your site saying, hey, did you know, for remarketing banner ads, which costs nothing until people click on them? Hey, come back and get interactive in ways that maybe you missed out. Just don't hide that stuff. Put it together, embed videos of how to use it, how to find it. There's lots of people out there who are, who are getting, getting to that finally, but we've been talking about that for quite a while. The third one is reuse and repurpose because like toilet paper, milk and chicken, content creators are in short supply right now. So some, some people, I just, I talked to several this week already. They're like, okay, I finally got the green light to go back in and upgrade my site. I got the green light to do virtual tours. I got the green light to, and guess what? If you try to call those people, they're going to tell you the same thing that, that the toilet paper, toilet paper people tell you, which is you can have one role, right? They might limit the amount, they might limit the amount of time as other, some companies outsource a lot of this stuff. And so you want to be asking those questions of where is this being made? Because if it's in India and they just got shut down for 21 days as of, as of today, right? That may impact how quickly you're going to get that. So certainly you should be going out and making more in any way possible, but also reuse and repurpose what you can because you may not be able to get it as fast as you need it. So ways you can do that are using a tool like Loom to do a screen recording. Use loom.com, it's a free tool. Taking a virtual tour and, and the folks at Ideal Homes did this about a year and a half ago or so. Walk through a virtual tour with audio explaining why the home was created, what makes it unique. You can do the same thing with photo galleries. Obviously you can repurpose video content into written format, into podcast format. You've got to reuse and repurpose what you have. You can't just sit around and say, well, we're going to have to wait two months because by then we hopefully will be getting back to a more, more normal situation. And my 3.5 is think longer term. Everyone's freaking out trying to figure out how to get content for next week. You've got to make sure that the content you're investing in is going to serve you beyond that because you're not, you're not going to get a whole bunch more budget to create a whole different set of content once we get back to new normal. And if I could slide in one more quick one because I'm trying to go fast. I think content marketing may quickly turn into content selling. And what I mean by that is your marketers need to be working on content for your sales team to pass on in what, you know, Mike Klein and I are talking about as asynchronous communication. Sitting on a one or two hour Zoom call is great for the people who are close to, to being done, but in those initial conversations, to just have a two or three minute call and then say, let me shoot you a quick video or let me send you a quick video that my marketing team put together on the floor plan in more detail. And then you can get back to me about your thoughts, feelings, ideas, right? This idea of asynchronous communication using the content marketing that we've created is also going to be really important because not everyone wants to go from speed dating to engagement in terms of how they interact with us.
Nice, thank you. Yeah, I think that, well, it was several years ago. I was sitting in a Jay Baer seminar who, you know, I know you know, and I know, and we're big fans of. And he looked at the audience, and for those of you listening that don't know, he's very legendary content marketing kind of guru out there. Jay Baer, B-A-E-R. And he said to the audience, welcome to publishing. You're all publishers now. And this was not a room of internet marketers. This was a trade association that we happened to both be speaking to. And I thought, well, leave it to Jade again, say exactly how it is, the simplest way possible. But folks like me, Matt, Kevin, Angela, we've all been trying to tell you for years that you're, you're in the publishing business. And now that our, our business models are really forced into this virtual social distancing world, you're really in the publishing business.
And what's the quote, the best time to plant a tree was 10 years ago, but otherwise today, right? So to be clear, I'm not saying don't do it if you haven't started yet, but you've got to figure out what you have at your disposal to reuse. In the meantime, you can't just plant the trees today and...
Yes, it's, yeah, it's too late in some respects to call our great virtual interactive floorprint providers and say, I need 50 interactive floorplans by Friday. Like that's not reasonable at this juncture. So I loved your idea, because back to Matt, moving fast, you know, moving fast. And then your idea of keeping it kind of simple in terms of what do you have right now that you could use, that you could, I just, if you all could make a mind shift, really, if you're a marketer or an owner right now, and if you could make a shift, yeah, right? Matt's got his...
130 bucks right here, guys, little...
Right? Yeah, we'll talk more about that when we get to like tech tips and gadgets and stuff. Just everybody make a note that in the Facebook group, underneath the tab or menu item for files, I've started a collaborative document there. I've got anything I'm going to reference there today and our other panelists can go in and edit that doc and add the things that get mentioned. And so then everything that gets mentioned will be in the chat PDF as well as in that doc. So Kevin mentioned Loom as a screen sharing tool. All right, the Facebook page, if somebody will put in the chat box for me, thank you. I'm going to launch another poll to kind of keep this moving. If you guys are online with us and looking at us on your computer, then I've got a website poll here in, in progress. I would have to agree with what Matt kind of said. And I saw Kevin nodding while Matt was talking. I think it's...
Yeah, it's definitely flattened out in terms of the data. This Sunday was basically the same as last Sunday in terms of web traffic. Now, you know, the only other thing that I think we can add to it is in terms of what's happening with that traffic, not just in terms of leads, but in appointments. This is where I think people have to make, again, we've talked about this a lot, their own internal decision about what your company believes. Because leads that are not ready, not willing to move forward in any form right now, you have to ask yourself, what is, do we believe there's value there or not? And that is, how long is this going to go on or not? It might be, be in there in what you believe. But even though web traffic has stabilized, the number of people willing to take that next step of a true virtual or in-person appointment, you know, some type of serious commitment is certainly continuing to go down. And I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable. The question is, are we basically in like an extended pre-sale without fail scenario where we're building our list? And then we're going to nurture that and be ready when it comes out? And can you wait that long to get to the other side? That's kind of, that's kind of...
That's kind of where it's at. I've seen a lot of scenarios as I've reviewed data, but this kind of down, obviously month over month, down week over week, absolutely. Depending on the builder, some were still up year over year. Kind of looks like that's where we're going to land on this poll. So I will hit share results and...
Sounds about right.
So, yeah, so I'm, for, for me, I'm going to share some thoughts about your website. And the thing that we've seen, number one, that was the most successful this past week in actually generating visits, virtual or phone calls or live chats or any kind of meaningful conversation whatsoever, was adding messaging to the site, as Matt said, to indicate how to do business with you. So the quicker you moved towards that, the better you probably did this week. Now, everything I say is all couched within the terms of your location. If you're in the state of Pennsylvania, which has been, has a shelter in place order, right? And real estate and construction are considered non-essential, then that's a very different outcome than places... outcome than places where it's considered still an essential business and those offices are still open, right? So all of those factors have to come into play. So absolutely getting the messaging on there and making it easy. Now, in terms of what we saw in generating actual conversations, live chat was top, number one. There was lots of live chat activity for what activity there was, as well as phone calls and text messages. We continued to see a decline in people signing up through email forms. So if you, it's very important on your site that you have it set up for what we call event tracking in Google Analytics. You can set up an event to track, meaning a button click, a form submission, a PDF download. It's where someone interacts with a specific piece of content, clicks a virtual tour button. You can set up an event to trigger for every one of those types of activities on your site. So one of the things, Kevin, that I'm doing is, I'm not, at this point, we're not playing a volume game with traffic, right? So I'm looking at quality of traffic. And okay, if I've got half the traffic I had, but I still have people clicking on virtual tours, I still have included feature sheets getting downloaded, I still have clicks on phone numbers, obviously leads, live chats, et cetera, then okay, like, that's, that's worth something, right? If that starts plummeting, then, you know, again, we got to circle back and think differently.
Yeah, yeah. And this will be the last data point really that I have, because I think everyone, again, has different data points. But what's interesting to me is, is on calls, when people are reacting to this drop in lead volume, go back to specifics, and Carrie, if you're going to talk about this, just make a motion and I'll stop, but go back to specifics, because one builder said, you know, things are just terrible, and we looked at the numbers, and the first week in March, it was 31 net appointments set, and then last week, it was a net 21. And I'm like, if you told me that you couldn't find toilet paper, milk, chicken, schools were shut down, there was no professional sports, and you would still get 21 leads, I think you would feel okay about that. So the worst, I don't think, is here yet. We still have enough people from the top of the funnel in January and February, at the middle and bottom is still working. And I think you got to keep that in mind, too.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but we don't know yet either, right? So hoping, hopeful, because I think Carrie made a really good point last week about there are a segment of people who made homeownership a goal for 2020. That was a goal. And I think some of your messaging that could really work would be staying focused on that, of helping those people specifically. And I'm sure she's going to talk to that in a minute, so I will stop. My next, so number one was being sure that your channels of communication are open, that you're not just relying on email forums, that you've got chats and phone calls, and that you indicating how to interact with you. My number two tip was that you are tracking all of that very granularly, and you are taking the wins where you see them, given what we're in the middle of. And then number three, I would say, it is exactly where Kevin was going, on the website, I mean, if it is not simple, stupid, obvious where to click or where to find the interactive plan, like personally, we like to embed interactive floor plans right on the page, right on the page. If you can have a button that'll jump you down to it, just to make sure they don't miss it, but the more obvious, everything is laid out on that page, the better you're going to do. The live chats, the lead requests, the phone calls that we saw that did happen, nearly all of them happened at the, what I call the community detail page level of the website, way down, not your homepage, not your map page, maybe your home plans detail page, if you're an on-your-lot or custom builder. If you're doing neighborhoods, if you're doing inventory, they happened way down. So can I get to those homes in one click or less? And then when I get there, is what I need right on the page, like hitting me in the face. Money is tight right now, so if you want to use a free tool like Hotjar or Crazy Eight, you can do recordings, screen recordings of users using your website, and you'll see very quickly that nobody ever clicks on that tiny, tiny little icon of whatever, because they didn't see it. So if you want to get a little user testing in real quick, then if you have the ability to make changes fast. Somebody jump in, hang on.
Yeah, you're good. If you have the ability to make changes fast, and that's the event tracking, too, is one of the few things that you have to partner with your web developer to do. So they've got to set up what those events are. Oh my goodness, Meredith, hang on there. Another great one is LuckyOrange.com is like the cheapest of the cheap. It's, you can get a product for 10 bucks a month that will do those screen recordings for you.
Okay, I'm back.
Event tracking is awesome, you just can't.
I love that you just drank Mucinex straight out of the bottle.
Straight out of the bottle.
Yeah, and you know what? For those of you that are listening in by phone, I just drank Mucinex straight from the bottom, from the bottle. And I do this, like, when I go give speeches, and the funnier thing, funny thing is, is I get funnier as I, more Mucinex I drink, so. It's a party. I have had something the last few days, I promise you, it's not the coronavirus, but I definitely have been battling something in the middle of all this insanity. It's probably been working 18 hours a day, what do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
And talking a lot.
One thing that I want to add to everything each one of you are saying is the fact that I remember back in the day when Meredith and I would teach together NHB courses, and salespeople would always ask us, how early should you call someone after they visited your model? And what's too much in follow-up? And in today's market, and all you guys are saying it, you cannot be too early, you can only be too late. Can, I want to, just like 10 seconds, I'm going to say this. We're getting ready to publish, we just did a big online builder shop of top 200 builders that we're going to put out, and we're talking about being down on leads. But just to throw out there, the number of, average number of follow-ups over a 30-day period was 2.67. Just want to say that.
That's terrible.
2.67, top 200 builders.
Yeah, so do you guys, do you guys hear like how awesome this is, that they all like jumped in while I had a coughing attack? That's fantastic.
Want me to jump into sales management while you recover? Okay.
Go for it.
So I don't know if I'm going to have three points, or a 3.5, or 4.5, but I'm going to be totally transparent to you. Technology is fabulous, and I am a panelist, and all that I have in my screen is our original panel, the poll. I see nothing but. I am giving you these like weird looks, it's because I'm thinking, okay, smile.
You look fine. You look, we don't see, we don't see a poll, Carrie, just keep going, you're fine.
So I, in my three points, and I do want to tell you that like, from all my statistic people, these are statistical from last week to this week. This is what I have been doing with sales managers. So you're going to get it straight from the trenches, which is kind of what I'm known for. So the three things that sales managers have to be concerned about, number one, please understand that there is not a sales department and a marketing department, that currently right now is one department, stay transparent with that. Let the salespeople know what the marketing department is doing to help them behind the scenes, because it helps their confidence. I'm finding lots of marketing directors, fabulous ones, that are like doing all this stuff, but then all of a sudden, they roll it out and maybe put some more people with a voice in. So that was just overarching. Here's my tip, number one, sales managers, you have got to inspect what you're expecting them to do. So out of sight is out of mind, and how do you get in sight with them? Because it, it used to be, I've got all this reporting, I'm stuck behind my computer, I don't go out and do my one-on-ones, I get it, I know it, I'm in your offices all the time, but that excuse doesn't really hold water right now. You've got to start holding virtual meetings, one-on-one meetings, team meetings, however you want to do to get your face or your voice in front of your salespeople to keep their energy level up, that's what you're being paid for right now. Leave the reporting to the website, Google Analytics, and to every other Google analytic that is out there, right now, your sales team needs you. So you need to create two-way communication. I'm saying practice what you preach. Don't tell them to send bomb-bomb videos out, send one to them, right? So develop your own protocol that says, this is what we're going to do to stay in touch with each other. I promise you this, and I want you to promise me that. And you kind of have like, you're going to make a new marriage with you to your sales team and your sales team back at you. And when I've been working on that this week, I am telling you, it's pretty spectacular. I did keep my mouth clean there, Matt, I just want you to know. Work on it, because I've been like, this is the coolest thing ever. I'm seeing that as one of our upsides, that we're going to have that. Develop a toolkit for them, you know, what goes in, in a book club, you know, pick a book, I have a team that we all picked a book, everyone had a say in the book, they're all ordering it, and we're just, and we're not going to do book reports, we're going to talk about them, we're going to get on a call. So number one was inspect what you expect, and how can you inspect right now if it's not onsite as much? Remember, you're homeschooling people, you're homeschooling. Who control the environment? You have to control their environment, because to them, they're front lines. They're the ones that are like, they're freak as freak, they're trying to figure out what's going on, but you need to figure out, how can you control their environment for them? One of my suggestions is have fun. So like, remember when you did a sales contest? How about virtual bingo? You know, do something that engages energy, so people are drawn to being more comfortable being virtual. This is new to them. You have to make it comfortable. Each and every one of you guys, even though I can't see you, are telling everybody about virtual, but we have to help them understand that and learn that. So it's kind of like, sales managers, what I want you to do is start practicing the things that we've been preaching, which I said, like, what are the things that worked? And you decide that, and you make that virtual, that is your job. I'm going to add an answer to a question now. This is not number three, so Kevin, I'm going to get 3.5. Someone sent me a question, I've heard it so much, I'm going to use it, and it's, salespeople are voicing that they're not comfortable being in the models right now, right? Everybody's doing that. So here's what I say to you, sales managers, when you have brought me in, and when you have done it yourself, and when you have gone through the sales process, and you learned it all yourself, and you read every fabulous book, when you got to the sales process line that said managing and handling objections, put your big girl pants on, put your big boy pants on, and manage that objection. It's like, why are you saying, I'm afraid, let's talk about that? Or what, what is really the answer to that? So it's the question after the statement, when you get it, and take care of it, because I've calmed so many people down. But there are a couple hints to do to that. Your signage is really, really important. If you get from your online sales counselor an appointment, and it's called a one-on-one appointment, when you get to the model, then what you need to do is, when you've welcomed them in, you have to have a great sign that says, we are currently in a one-on-one appointment, can't wait to have one with you, but lock the door. You don't need strand, random people coming in behind, that these people are thinking, well, this isn't one-on-one, figure out how you do what you do. This is a good time to get out and drive, you don't have to talk to anybody. Like, I love it when I go by and I see a sign, sales managers, that says, model open. No, it's not. It's currently closed, and they're laughing at you, because they realize you ain't open. So you have to do things like that. I wanted everybody to understand the fact that it's really, it's sensitive distancing. It's not as much social distancing, it's safety and sensitive distancing. I'm doing this for me, I'm doing this for you. So when you have those appointments, and then you shut the door so that you're in the appointment, with all due respect, the sign that says how to reach me, everything that you can possibly do, go have a hand washing party. I mean, I think, how fun would that be? The people that wash together buy together. Get your hats on and think. So that came from my question, and now here's point three, live your culture on the outside. This is my, everybody ready? I can't see me, but I hope I'm going, this is my serious moment. Now's the time to recognize your core values, teach them, revisit them. Who are you? What do you do? How do you do it? And why do you do it? Because if you get the opportunity to get a one-on-one, or a scheduled appointment, or a virtual appointment, or an email appointment, or a FaceTime appointment, or all those other things that are German to me, that these three are talking about, I'm telling you, they need to know that. That is what they need to know, because they really are only wanting to do it with one builder and one person. I'm telling you, is your builder going to be the one? And are you going to be the one to tell people, this is why pickups, this is what we're doing about our sensitive, you know, our sensitivity distancing, yuck! And those kinds of things. So living your culture, sales managers, last but not least, help your messaging that they're having virtually. They're a little worried about what to say, and that's why they don't want to get in their model. Because if somebody comes in, I like had somebody this week had a one-on-one appointment, and the door was open, and all of a sudden in came five people with three kids that ran through the model, and this salesperson was like, I don't know what to say, except like, you've got to get out of my model. But how do we want to get them to get out of your model? So work on. So these are the days that you can, as sales managers, go back, sharpen your tools, you all have them, if you need them, let me know, get out your old time books, everything old is new again, and manage and handle the objections that your salespeople have to make them feel comfortable, and reiterating, have fun. I want to see somebody go have like virtual bingo.
Yeah, right? So Carrie, one of the tools that I put together for today that is posted in the Facebook group.
Oh, it's on my white screen?
Yes, it's posted in the Facebook group. I did do a tutorial on how to use Zoom, if your builder is using Zoom, how to use Zoom to do a virtual open house slash model home tour. I did a play-by-play, so I talked to you, the sales agent, and kind of told you what I was going to do, then I did a little of it for you, so I kind of, and then I'd go like, okay, scene, and then here's what I just did. And so I did it quickly today, it's not perfect, my glasses are on through the whole thing, and the light reflects in my glasses, and I'm like, looking like this, you know, it's not perfect, but it'll get, it'll help you. Because, because that's the thing is, Carrie, our people need tools, and they need our leaders to lead by example, right?
Right. To that point, I thought about, everybody knows how important model home positioning is, like where you stand, and where you put your customers at a vantage point. I thought about getting myself in and go, look at you standing here, and look at you standing there, because a picture is worth how many words, you guys.
Yeah, and remember, like what I'm doing, I don't even sell houses for a living, so please be kind at my descriptive words I use for this model home, because it won't be as good as yours. But I do know how to use tech tools, right? And, and that's what we have right now, in these tools. And I think, and I've seen some kind of snarky comments out there, depending on the thread, and that, you know, we've, we've got to stick to relationships and one-on-one, and that is 100% true, will always be true, we're human beings, right? But at the moment, the tools that we have, we're going to kind of go high-tech to be as high-touch as possible. If you go high-tech mass marketing.
Right.
Blasting people with generic stuff, it's, it's boring and stupid, and nobody cares.
I need to say this, because it was from last week, and I think it was from Matt, and it bears repeating, because I've worked on it all week with salespeople, and they've been like, is that so lassoed, and everyone else is, you don't have so many people right now that you need to turn off your autoresponders, and you need to respond with care and confidence to every single individual person. You've got the time, and they've got the time. You've got the time and they've got the time. That's your homeschooling for today.
I think the personalization, when, when you use tech, if you personalize it. It'll be as touch as it can be for now. And then of course, eventually we want to get back to seeing people eyeball to eyeball and working with them and getting to know them. Because that's so valuable, right? Okay, cool. All right. Thank you, Carrie. So this is a perfect lead-in to Angela. Because Angela's going to, you know, she's been working remotely and in the office, a combination of both for many years. Yeah.
I've done both and I'm getting a notice that my internet connection is slow. I asked my son to stop playing PlayStation. So hopefully, hopefully that work, you know, this is the real, the new reality, right? Is that we've got all these other things that I'm competing with my kids now. Darn kids.
Yeah, right?
But you know, we're, we're a weekend now and we're pros at working remotely, you know? I mean, that's, and I have to ask the question and I think anyone who says no is probably lying. Anyone else get an alert on their screen to say, or to say that their screen time was up last week?
No.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say that social media consumption was probably up by one billion percent. I don't know what the stats are. Tell, does anyone know what those stats are as far as?
I haven't looked.
Anyways, they were, they were.
It's a lot. That's the official number. It's a lot.
But you know what? My goal really this week, I'm not that, you know, I have to admit, I'm not proud of that. You know, my goal this week is really for it to be down. And I need to work on distractions and I think this is something that we all, you know, we're now a weekend. And we need to, to figure out what that looks like. And whether it's kids, dogs, spouses, or simply the news updates, we need to kind of turn it off and we need to focus. And you know, I've been known to put my phone on do not disturb. I've been known to take off or to remove apps, Facebook and, and some of the social media apps. Because I just can't, I know myself and I know I need to, to be cautious of, of what I, what I do. So you know, I, I wanted to come up with three C words was connect, communicate and, and be calm during this. And I, you know, and I, but I also need to add, to say, you know, need to add the word focus as well during all of this. You know, one of the advantages certainly that I'm having with, with working from home a hundred percent is I am loving the commute. I think that's something that, you know, I have a little bit of extra time. I'm able to focus personally on myself and my health. And I think during all of this, I said this on a session yesterday too. You know, we all have to focus a little bit more on our own wellbeing during these kinds of times. So that's just my little personal piece of advice. There's really, there's no silver bullet or magical piece of technology that's going to make this go away. Or, you know, we, working remotely and I, and I kind of, this came to me. It is a bit like implementing a new software app. You know, we implemented last week. And we're now in the adoption phase. You know, we, we need to now create some habits and we need to figure out what works for each of us. Some questions that I'm hearing from builders is, you know, how do we communicate? How do we connect? How do we build remote relationships with our own internal team as well as our buyers? And how do we know if people are working? You know, how can we see what they're doing? And you know, this is not the time to be big brother. But it's the time to use the technology that you have. So you know, I, obviously my little bias, look at your CRM. Doesn't matter what it is, look at your CRM. If your team needs some refresher training, get it done. There's time for that right now. And I would be willing to bet whatever supplier you're using is going to offer some training to you. Talk with your team about productivity, about the hours of what your expectations are. You know, we're all remote right now and we're struggling a little bit about what those expectations. So as leaders, you know, we need to take sort of an introspective look at what kind of remote manager we are. And what kind we want to be. Last week, the talk was about video conferencing, how to stay in touch with your buyers. And you know, what does a virtual appointment look like? You know, I, I think Jen Barkin said this yesterday, Kevin, on, on your Facebook live session. FaceTime may be the simplest way to do a virtual, it doesn't need to be complex. Mary, you just posted that video on Zoom, which is fantastic. And you know, people, I got caught last week saying, oh, you know, Zoom's super easy to use. It, it is easy to use if you are adept, if, if you've used it before. It's, it's a familiar application, but you have to practice. So I, you know, I encouraged one of a, one of my builder friends, I said, you know what, you implement, you can use Zoom. But pair up your sales team, have them practice on each other. You know, what does the experience, what does the buyer experience look like? And what's, how do you provide a consistent experience? And review that process with your team. It's new to all of us. And you know, remember, any technology you implement needs a sponsor. My client said that last week and it needs practice. Communication is key during this time. Continue with your daily, weekly meetings, whatever they are, just keep doing it. It doesn't have to be, you know, I, I think we all have this perception that things are dramatically different. And don't get me wrong, they are, they're, they're different. We're remote. But you can still maintain some continuity and some familiarity with your team. If, you know, if you used email before to communicate, continue to use email. If you've been considering an internal messaging app, you know, there, there's lots out there. I, you know, I highly recommend Slack. It's a easy to use, I say easy to use, application. But it does, it requires, you know, there's an adoption period. I wouldn't use it if it's just a short-term solution. I look at it as a long-term, ongoing, ongoing application. You know, first and first and foremost, figure out what problem you're trying to solve. Any new technology takes some time and you know, someone needs to lead the way. And you know, it needs to be, it needs to be the right fit for everyone. My, my last tip too is, you know, just suggest, you know, ask your teams to guide you a little bit on what's needed. Let them share the apps or programs that they're finding useful. There are, if you Google remote, working remotely, you will get more information coming back than you know what to do with. There's online whiteboards, there's your messaging apps, there's everything, you name it. Just, but adoption will happen faster if you have the buy-in from your team. Two more things and I, you know, wanted to say, use your phone for its original purpose. It's a phone. Call people, connect and talk with them. I don't know about you guys, but I'm talking with people more than ever before. Whether it's virtual on a go-to-meeting or Zoom, or whether it's over the phone. It's, it's super important. Carrie said it earlier and have some fun. It's really important, this, you know, salespeople generally are extroverts. They need interaction and that's the part they're missing right now. They're, they're not getting the water cooler talk. They're not talking, seeing other people. So you need to make, look for some fun ways to do that, whether it's a virtual happy hour. You know, I've seen lots of things on that online. I know the DYJ team, you guys start or you guys end every call with around the room. What's a great thing that happened this week to you? So you know, you need, just need to look at different ways. Oh, look at that.
Meredith was showing her cough medicine bottle and.
Yeah.
My wife has that one.
You said a virtual happy hour, so I held up my muskets.
There we go. Okay, see, I'm so focused. Matt and I are doing a challenge right now. We have to drink a gallon of water every day.
What?
His says inspirational messages on it.
Sorry, we're, we're cracking ourselves up. But, but no, Angela, you're making really good points. I would completely 100% agree. That now is not the time to bust out a new tech tool. That if you're not comfortable with it. So if you happen to use Zoom, I wanted to show you how to do it. But if you're a FaceTime person, fun. And this is why I've been recommending to everybody on their websites. Use ambiguous language of virtual visit. Well, what is that? Well, it's whatever the customer's comfortable with and will define it as. Could be a phone call. That's it. If you start promising live video appointments on your website. You will need to deliver that experience and deliver it well. And if you can, awesome sauce, right? I could tell Kevin's dying to jump in here.
Ladies first. Well, I, I just don't, don't forget besides the technical part of it, there is the, there is the energy part. So I don't like people. My wife does. I don't. So ironically, I have four little ones that we created. But we had a 45-minute Zoom call with my family. And then she called her friend for 10 minutes on FaceTime. And then we talked to our missionary friends in Guatemala over messenger video for 30 minutes. And when we were done of, you know, what was that, like under two hours of video time? She goes, holy crap, you do this for six hours a day? She's like, I don't want to talk to another person. And she's an extrovert. When you're on camera all the time, that's what, again, like, if you're not used to it, not just technology. Being like staring at yourself, getting used to seeing your own face. As you're talking.
Weird.
Amount of energy that it can really drain your sales team. So Carrie, I think what you're talking about is that practice has got to be done. Because just like any other muscle, you've got to build in your body. That energy to be on camera for periods of time is something you've got to work on.
And I think to your point, Kevin, to your, sorry, to your point is, I think that's how I ended up sick by Friday afternoon. Because I had never done so much camera work and.
And I love people. I just don't like them. That's.
Yeah, I don't, I'm an introvert. I'm with you. I don't really, but I, I, it wore me down and it got, and it, yeah, Carrie.
You know, the one thing that I want to say to our listening audience, but all, we all understand it and we do it. Is that with all these things, you can't, I, when I work with salespeople and they're all going to go, I've heard this. Is that it's not all of the things that you do some of the time. It's some of the things that you do all of the time. And that you schedule, like when you hit on something that works, like a team Zoom meeting. Then I know with a team that I've got, we did a random Monday, we need to do this after the weekend. And then everybody's like, okay, how about the front end of the week and the back end of the week? Let's schedule it for Friday. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we're good to go. You have to schedule these things then, but do them all the time. So don't run out to all these things and go, yes, loom, zoom, to whatever.
Vroom.
Okay, speaking of room, it's 5:02. We have had some questions. I know Matt's got one that he grabbed to answer live. So Matt, why don't you tackle that one?
Well, first off, that was a mistake. I didn't mean to grab it live, but that's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll do it live.
If you don't want to, I'll take it.
No, it's fine. I believe the question was regarding. If you, if we, if we needed to make cuts on, on digital advertising, essentially where should we start? Like, you know, if we've, if we essentially are in a position where we have to close for business, we don't have the ability. Maybe it's because of the restrictions that you've been put under, under your sales environment, you know, with your talent. Or maybe you as a company just don't have the ability to continue to move forward under those circumstances. Because that, that's a reality for some people. They just don't have the ability to do it. That absolutely, you want, you're going to have to scale back, right? You're going to have to scale back at some point. And the, the big, it depends comes into play when we're talking about where I'm going to scale back. Looking at kind of in my head, going through where most people spend money. I'm going to, I'm going to start with display advertising. So if I'm doing any display that is, that's not geared towards remarketing specifically. That's going to be the first thing to go. And then I'm good, and without, without, I'm going to say it anyway, but if it's not digital related, that's gone too. Right? No, no print. It's out the door, at least if I'm not under contract for that. And then I'm going to, I'm going to start scaling back from there. I'm going to start scaling back on a little bit on social media. And because that's paying by impressions, right? Even though it can be highly targeted. The last place I'm going to cut is going to be Google search. Simply because you're only paying for that if they actually click it and that is much lower, that could be much lower down the funnel. There can probably be a variety of opinions on that particular question on our, on our panel today. But again, that's a, trying to answer a very specific question in a broad way without knowing all the details. So that's, that's.
Yeah, and I, I did a lot of research this week, reading outside the industry. Looking at other thought leaders and, and publications and so forth. I saw one guideline I thought was interesting of if, if you're not in a position to spend marketing money, three months of marketing money without a sale. That's a guideline, right?
I would agree with that.
So you know, because it's potential. Now, some of y'all are still making sales, so that's awesome. But you know, like what is your cash flow position? And how long does, what does that cash flow look like without a sale? And then where does all that need to be allocated, right? And so I would agree on the Google search. I'm always big on that. Whenever I do attribution modeling on the website traffic we monitor. Google search is always the strongest in terms of conversion. And some of the other, I, I don't really disagree with too much of what you've got there. But again, you're the one that's famous for saying, it depends. And so this is where this answer is really, really important. Kevin, go ahead, please time in.
I think on the content side, I think most people are still underestimating. You know, someone a couple of weeks ago, they're like, well, I only made, Kevin, like every week I try to give people a content goal to work on. Like I only made three testimonial videos and they're like two, three minutes apiece. And they looked amazing. I was like, stop it. What do you mean only made three videos this month? Content is hard and it can be expensive. Sure, you can, you can do do-it-yourself stuff. And I think there's different times for different types of content. If you're running an ad for something, it better look good. It, it better not just be something snapshot from someone's car. If you're doing the virtual selling and you're going out and taking pictures, that's a different, where you're using is different. But you know, I think about tools like Envision, which even though they remind me every time I mention about it. That all their data shows that you make more money off options when you have it. So the cost is not, it, it is an expensive, when you look at it just per piece, right? So I'm not, I'm saying I believe in the fact that you get more money off those options. But in today's environment, and this is where I say, where is the puck going? Do we think we need better virtual design studio experiences? Yes, we absolutely do. And you can make a PDF lookbook and you can simplify your options. You can do all these other things, but that all feels very short-term stopgap to me. It does not seem, seem like where the puck is going. And so that's the only thing I'd say about digital spend is, I think we're still underestimating how expensive and complex it is to do it well. And I think a lot of people are, are defending, a lot of marketers still are defending their ad budget. Which ads are awesome. They create revenue for us as well when done well. But they don't, they don't have momentum to them. You turn them off and they are done. Whereas all the content serves you forever.
And that's, that's an important point because depending on what type of ad it is and how much AI. They, for Facebook's using to find your audience, right? You pause that sucker. That's okay. I get it. Cash flow, got to do what you got to do. But please understand that you're not just going to turn that back on and it ramp up as we come out of this. It will go back through what it calls the learning phase of finding your audience again. And there is momentum and time that it takes to ramp that back up. So.
Even if you get past that fast, it just takes humans long to ramp up, right?
It does, right? In here. Good point.
Yeah, you lose a day or two maybe on the Facebook end, but on the human side. Those people who are at the beginning of the funnel now through Facebook and Instagram are going to take a while to, to follow back through.
Are really costly. And I would challenge people to understand that whoever you have connected strongly with, they're gold to you. The one thing when we're talking about budget, that I would recommend that you also look at as, and I know I'm not looking for cheesy photography from salespeople. But Meredith and I talk about this a lot, that what can you do for free? And especially while they've got time, when your website is in real time. Like they just mowed down a ton of trees in the neighborhood that you're on the VIP list for. How much do you think, how far does that go to someone? Because they're not out driving there maybe. So how far can real-time photos go on your website? We've seen it be huge. So.
Absolutely. Just spend the $2 or whatever. It's like basically nothing still in the environment we're at. To, to, to use a service like Box Brownie to have them optimize those pictures that were taken. And the great thing is they're based in Australia. So you send them the pictures you have today. And they send you better versions of, of yourself tomorrow for two bucks a piece. and they send you better versions of, of yourself tomorrow for two bucks a piece.
Yeah.
I saw some of those, by the way, after this all became the thing. Dang.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice, right?
The other thing, when you're talking about the, on the content, on the content side, you know, people love doing things that other people are doing, right? It makes you, it makes you validate what you're doing, right? And so that's the power of an event. That's the power, you know? So right now, if you're, it's really important to make sure we're getting photos of people buying homes right now, right? Getting that out there. Getting, if you've, if you're doing a virtual appointment with a buyer, I would be doing the classic virtual selfie or screenshot and post and getting that content out there to let people know that not only do we offer this, but other people are actually doing it. And that's this, that's social power at its greatest and making, and that's free. Doesn't cost a nickel. This is where organic social media, while it is, while it is significantly throttled down on your reach and all that good jazz. But that's where organic social media and posting these things on your website can really come into play.
You want the confidence. Yeah, absolutely. I, I, everything that we're talking about here, the way that I think about it conceptually is what I call the democratization of sales and marketing. That many years ago, we went from where marketing was held by just a few in the company. And those people created all of the content and all of the look feel and all of the experience, the MX, the marketing experience for people, right? And really, if you think about what Carrie's been saying, what Kevin's saying, that democratization now happens at the salesperson level, which is why.
It does. It absolutely does.
It does. And that's why we've had the freak out for the last however many days because probably half of our salespeople, if we're being brutally honest on this call, are not able to participate in that world and they're scared. And so that's where Carrie's tips of training them. I mean, if you're a sales leader on this call and Zoom isn't your platform, you don't use it. Angela's right, don't start now. But what do they know how to do? Have you shown them? Have you done a FaceTime virtual appointment and done a coaching thing? Like you have to train and teach, measure what you, what you want, right, Carrie? So this, there is a section of our industry that really has never come along with this democratization of content. And now here we are. And the people who are making sales right now are the ones that have it figured out and they're marketing one-on-one salesperson to think. Now, if you're a bigger sized company, particularly if you're a public company builder, of course you have a brand message to protect. Of course you have brand standards to protect. And that adds another layer on where you've got to think about what Carrie said is providing certain tools to the salespeople. But at some level in this environment, I believe you also are going to have to take some of the reins off and let them create some content to push out there to their spheres of influence. Because this is going to happen very granularly.
No, I completely agree. And yet I think the important point to remember is that curation by those in marketing is still important. So in the one-on-one communication, absolutely. You need to teach them. If they're uncomfortable shooting a video or a bomb bomb and sending to their customer and they don't know what to say and you're worried what they might say, then yes, we've got a problem. The democratization there is important. When we're talking about posting a video to your company's Facebook page, uncensored, unlooked at.
No, no.
I think that's a different, and I think that's the only thing I worry about is people misunderstanding that. But Abrazo Homes in New Mexico, one of the things they did is they're, they're having a contest, to Carrie's point, about make the best piece of content you can around your model home for us right now. But I, I bet you, I bet you a corona that they don't showcase each and every one of those pieces of content on their page or in their ads, right? So, yeah, so, so that's all I, I want to make sure because we've seen some interesting emails come through Lasso, right, Angela?
Yeah, of course. And I think that that, but, but if the, if the salesperson wants to do a walkthrough with their iPhone of their model for their own personal Facebook page, like it's time to take some of those reins off and a lot of companies have not done that. And, and of course, it's not going to get posted on the company website without, and the Facebook page, without being properly curated and, and monitored and so forth. But at the same time, I mean, it is time to find the line of what we allow people to do and give them the reins to and the support. And it's not even just allowing them to do, but we actually train them and empower them to do it.
And they need, they want to be busy, you guys. They want to be part of this problem. All you people that are thinking that that Sunday traffic report hurts really bad right now. If it's super ugly that week, it's like, oh, do I have to click send on this? What's going to happen to me? They want to be part of the solution.
Yeah. Angela, you want to jump in?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, they want to add value. Everyone wants to add value and everyone wants to, to provide, to, to produce something, right? They, they want to provide, see the value. And I just, you said it, Meredith, we need to train. And that is, you know, I, I see that on a daily basis. People want to, you know, they want to send a mass mail, but they need to be trained on how to do it, what looks good. And, and you know what? Not everyone is a designer. So we need to, you know, allow people to produce the content, but maybe they, maybe somebody else refines it. They put the images in.
Yeah, curation is, is the key. If you've got, I mean, you certainly want to ground source any content creation you can, but, but curating it and is, is a, is a big piece. And then also though, not all marketers, like I just said, like I had to become a people person when I worked for builders because then when someone creates a piece of content and, you know, just like my two-year-old draws something really pretty, I'll put it on my fridge. I'm not going to stick it on a yard sign necessarily right outside. So telling someone that they're, like, so, so again, when you talk about teaching the team, I would also teach them what the criteria is. And so it's not personal to you. That way it doesn't become personal. I don't say, sorry, sorry, Matt, you know, that's just an ugly picture and I can't use that. But you can show them examples of good and bad and set the stage because essentially you're going to be grading them while you're curating and you don't want to make it personal.
Right, right. So here you go, Kevin. Here's our old adage. You know, tell me and I hear and show me and I understand. And better yet, give me the criteria that I will shine and rise above. Because I can do that. I can do A, B, and C.
Yeah, the stuff, the stuff that Meredith and I take for granted of, oh, we don't want the garage to be the biggest thing in the picture, right? That doesn't come naturally.
I'm obsessed with that. Obsessed.
Somebody, please, for the love, get off to the side, take a picture, not directly in front of the garage.
That would be amazing. And it would be good if you closed the windows and straightened up the sign in the yard and perhaps Photoshop out the dumpster. That would all be amazing.
Pour the pot.
Okay, so we have given you guys a lot to think about. Oh, and put the toilet seats down. Someone said in. Oh, that, we got two votes for put down toilet seats.
Funny.
Right? So as we, I know I'm really loud, sorry. As we pull all this together, I'll give you a couple of things. One is I always like to give you an action item. I think you've heard plenty today. But just in case you haven't, I want, if you're a salesperson on this call, a sales leader, or you communicate with the team, you're on the marketing side, whatever, I want you to encourage your sales team to get back to January 1 in the CRM. I want you to pull out every single inquiry that you've had, phone, text, live chat, email, a smoke signal, carrier pigeon. I don't care how. I want you to get every one of those folks. And then I want you to use Carrie's messaging of, you indicated that homeownership might be a goal for you in 2020. And I just want you to let you know, despite all the insanity, we are here, we are open and we have virtual visits available. Is there some way that I can still help you? And if you do that, you are going to find some people that want that permission to move forward. And that tactic has been working for several of the teams that I've been communicating with. How long will that work? Like Kevin said, are these people that are, we're still kind of in that early first quarter funnel when we were roaring and I don't know, but it's working right now. So I want you to really look at that as a tactic. Then number two, be, share with us, right? So we've got this Facebook group going, Builder Town Hall. If you're not a member, you can request membership and as long as you're in the home building industry and you agree not to self-promote, I will approve you. And we want to hear what's working for you. So please post in that group and share. Right now I do have to approve all the posts because let's face it, we're a group of marketers and salespeople. And I'm really, really insistent that this is a group where we share and we do not self-promote. So please don't think because I have it set for approval that I don't want you posting. I do. We want to hear from you. I just want to give it a little check first and make sure there's no link to your website. So please, you know, do that. I will be back next Tuesday. I don't know what the show will look like next Tuesday, to be honest. I really don't. I'm taking this day by day. I don't know who will be here with me. I'm just figuring it out as we go. But my hope is to bring you something that is timely and relevant every single week that you can use for the next few days at least, until we reset and we go back into hopefully not shock and scramble. But if we do, we'll be shocked and scrambling with you, we promise. All right? And in the words of Melinda Brody, one of my best friends and mentors, mentors in the industry, from all of us to you, love ya, mean it. We'll talk to you guys soon. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
See ya.
Bye, everybody.